All right, we're going to start just a little bit late for tonight's regular city council meeting. It is Tuesday, February 18th, 2020. If everyone would join me with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, the first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We do have two additional, two additions, three additions, four additions. Under new business, we have adopted a resolution for the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association to conduct a raffle. We have item number three, which would be the same concept for Voyager's Ducks Unlimited. On item number six, we did have, we did not receive the award, so we have some council information on the Transportation Alternatives Program. And we have correspondence. We ended up receiving the Library Board of Trustees' agenda and minutes and the director's appointment from February 12th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with additions.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the minutes from February 3rd, 2020's regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussions, questions, concerns? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, as in addition to our packet this evening, we have the Committee of the Whole minutes from February 10th, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have the resolution to, for the transfers and claims. Going to Fund 101, $9,951.67, coming from the 601 water in the amount of $5,559.67, and also coming from the 603 fund sewer with $4,392 even. Going to the permanent improvement fund, $66,666.36. That's coming from water and sewer, the 601 and the 603, both in the amount of $33,333.33. Going to the capital outlay, $25,760.42. Coming from water, the 601, is $19,136.17, and coming from sewer, the 603 fund, $6,624.25. For a total transfers of $102,378.75. The City of International Falls regular claims, $524,125.74. Airport commission claims, $9,995.07. Airport reconstruction phase two runway, $130,532.57. And library board claims of $8,666.72. For a total accounts payable and claims of $673,320.10. Councils, Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. At this time, open audience, open forum, please come forward.
I guess this is more or less old business. I wasn't able to make the committee, the whole meeting, and I don't know if you brought up the issue I am concerned about regarding plastic bags.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes?
Name and address, please.
Reynolds Calder and 1901 Sixth Avenue East.
The city.
We...
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, no problem. So it was brought up at the committee, the whole meeting. We had a very, very quick discussion about that. We did send it to Land Use and Legislation, which, that meeting was at 5:00 today. We just received the City of Duluth's ordinance on their bag policy, which effect is five cents per bag, the way that they wrote their policy. And it starts on April 1st. Since you've been here last, I did speak to Dave Stewart, the former owner of Super One here in town, and he said he would, if he was staying in business, he would greatly support the idea. It would save him about $70,000 a year. I have spoke with the owners of Miners, which now own both County Market and Super One here in the community. And they basically said that they're kind of in a holding pattern of wait to see. They do operate multiple Super One stores in Duluth. And since that policy has not went into place until April 1st, they're kind of seeing what it's going to look like. So as we discussed earlier today, we're definitely interested in moving forward with a policy and looking at what that would be, but we'd like to see what happens and how it works out in Duluth before we make a change here.
Great, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Minneapolis kicked this can down the road for about two and a half years before anything got rolling. So I'm kind of curious as to the timeline. Is there any feel that you've got for when the next move might be made on this?
We're going to have another discussion on it at the Land Use and Legislation, which is the third Tuesday of the month, so that'll be next month. But as we kind of discussed, we'd really like to see how that affects probably the two largest bag users in our community, which is Miners. And with that being said, they did tell me, you make a policy, we'll have to follow it. So that's just a conversation piece, but we'd like to see how it affects them in Duluth before we make any changes here.
That's all.
Well, thank you.
I appreciate what you've done so far.
Yep, thank you.
Important, thanks.
Anybody else have anything to bring to the council? All right, you'll also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. We don't have any public hearings, we don't have any opening bids. Next item we have is under old business, and that would be to remove from the table the mayor's appointments to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board. Chair would entertain a motion to take that off the table?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Nelson to remove that item from the table. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. It is now formally before us, the mayor's appointment to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board. At this time, I would like to submit myself as the appointment, and I would like to put Counselor Deitch as the alternate. And that was mainly because you were not at the last meeting.
I reviewed the tape and I knew that was coming.
So Chair would entertain a motion to appoint the mayor and Counselor Deitch to the Emergency Communications Board.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have another item to remove from the table, which is to confirm the mayor's appointments to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board, and that is the Regional Advisory Committee, the RAC. Chair would entertain a motion to remove that from the table.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Now, the appointment to the Regional Advisory Committee, the RAC, is formally before us. I would make the appointment of Chief Manassa as the representative and Todd Ojala as the alternate. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those nominations, or those appointments?
Motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next is to reconsider or discuss the Second Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan that we approved in January, on January 21st, 2020. As you can see in your packet, the city administrator outlined what the concerns were from our, from the Comprehensive Plan. City Administrator, you want to give a quick background of how we got to this and Antonio's remarks?
Yes, Mayor. The city council had taken three action on three different amendments to the Comprehensive Plan at the meeting on January 21st. And so Antonio Rosell with the Community Design Group had made the revisions one, three, or amendments, one and three, that were necessary. But in reviewing the amendment to number two, the Second Amendment that the council adopted, there were some concerns with the language. And in essence, the council had proposed deleting a sentence, but the same, and it identified a process for going through the annexation, or the steps that we would take to go through the process of annexation. And his concern was that there was three other paragraphs on the same page that go back and reference that same process. When you delete the process, you can't leave references to the process in three different places in, on the same page. So he was recommending actually that the council not make that change. So what I provided in the packet was some information that showed the strikeouts that you had made at the meeting on January 21st, and those are in blue, so they're in the second paragraph on page 38 of the comp plan. In order to be consistent with the rest of the page and the reference to those steps that were outlined, I showed in red ink other deletions that should be consistent with what the council had acted on, and then not make further references to that, those steps. So you can see that in the third, the fourth, and the fifth paragraph, there were some strikeouts and deletions. And then in the, on the right side of the page, that column that has a green background on it, I had highlighted, or actually I had identified the same references to be struck from the document. So I think the question for the city council is, do you want to move forward with your original intent, which was to delete the line that says, "This plan recommends completing these steps before any annexation action. One was completing a financial cost benefit analysis on the implications of the proposed annexation. Two, close coordination with Koochichin County, and three, communication with the affected landowners." So in the Second Amendment, again, you asked that that language be struck, and the consultant had just identified other areas where we were still referring to that process. So I think we'd be looking at two options for the council to consider. One is if you want to move forward with striking the language, then I believe that the additional strikeouts I showed in red ink would have to be made to be consistent on this page. Or you could take action to rescind your action in option two, and then leave all the language unchanged on page 38. And I believe his feelings are, if I can encapsulate those, and I did include him, you know, his email to me in the packet, and I believe his feeling was, is those are steps, one of them was necessary by state statute, and the other is, is those are steps that we would probably want to do anyways in terms of involving the affected property owners and having information meetings, and as well as coordinating with Koochichin County.
Mayor?
Please.
Refresh my memory, why were we going to delete these?
The reason that I made the recommendation to strike those lines is because it's already state statute that that's what you would do anyways. And I thought, my thought was, it was relatively redundant. Secondly, if my memory serves me correctly, some of the outlines of this section were updated very, very recently before we received them, and the close coordination with Koochichin County was added at the very end, after the, at the last meeting of the thing. The only, at the Planning Commission, the only additions that came up at the very end were how we were to work and deal with the county in response to our Comprehensive Plan. And what my concern was, is this is not the county's Comprehensive Plan, this is the city's Comprehensive Plan. And how we move forward for the betterment of the residents of International Falls is important to me, and I don't think that we should be adding words in like "close coordination" when there's state statute of how you are to move forward in the annexation process. So my question would be to city administrator, if we were to take option two and just strike the word "close" because state statute is going to say it, we have to have coordination with the county, "close coordination," I don't know what that even means. They're in every step of the way as we walk through the process? I just, I think if we were to keep it, I would be comfortable with option two and just cutting the word "close," not trying to cut any ties with the county in any capacity. I just, I strongly believe that this is our, the City of International Falls' Comprehensive Plan, and the last updates that we got were from the county on how they feel we should be handling our Comprehensive Plan. So that's what my concerns are. I feel if we do annexation in the future, we're definitely going to, A, conduct a financial cost benefit of whether the implications for the city are warranted; B, we're going to be working with Koochichin County because that's the affected landowners; and C, obviously we're going to be having communication with the affected landowners. So that's what my concerns are, that the very last items that came into this document were very, very specific of how we work with the county. Does the council have a recommendation of how we move forward on this, on this specific?
Mayor?
Yes.
Excuse me.
I just have a question, so you go.
Okay. I would be very comfortable with option two and amending it to rid the word "close."
Just coordination with Koochichin County?
Yes.
Okay. And you had something, Counselor Nelson?
My question was, so the blue on option one, that's the original proposed language that was taken out, and the red is what we missed, that also has to be taken out if we decide to take out blue?
Blue's already technically out.
Yes.
It's a matter of, do we want to amend that by...
Cutting everything.
By cutting everything else. Blue is already, technically, blue has already been approved out.
Correct.
So we would have to, we would have to rescind that amendment in order to put it back in, and then we can then re, then we can change it. So it's actually, it would be two actions, because one, we would have to put it back in, and then two, we can move to amend it.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yes.
And I would agree with Counselor Kraus' strategy.
It would require two actions.
Yep, I agree with that as a strategy. So if that's what we're looking at doing, we would amend or rescind the Second Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan that was approved on January 21st, 2020. If that's what we're interested in doing, the chair would entertain a motion to rescind the Second Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, which was approved on January 21st, 2020.
Counselor.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. So what that would do is bring option two in its entirety. Is that correct? Ken? If we rescind...
It would put the language that's been struck out in blue ink back into the Comprehensive Plan.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I too agree with you that it is redundant, because the state law is quite clear as to what we need to do. So I think we're restating the obvious, and one of my fears would be, if the law changes, do we then amend this further down if they make annexation more difficult, or if they make it easier? I mean, we're kind of putting, we're kind of putting a policy here that if they loosen the restrictions, we've pigeonholed ourselves by, I mean, this is a 30-year plan, right? So if we, I mean, we are saying that this is what we are going to do. We are making this our, it's not necessarily ordinance, but this is what we are going to do in the future. I feel, in my opinion, I'm going to vote, I'll tell you right now, I'm going to vote no, because it's my opinion that we strike, we kept, we keep it struck, and we strike the rest of the stuff, because it is quite redundant. And if this, I prefer to align with what the state is saying we do. If we leave, if we put this back in, then we're saying that this is what we absolutely have to do. And if by somewhere along the way it changes, or somebody doesn't agree with something, I'm not necessarily comfortable with it. Again, it's not ordinance, but I'm just not comfortable with the language. That's just my opinion on the matter.
Fair. Counselor Buller?
Can't that be amended at any time? At any time the state would, the state would change something, this could be gone into and be amended at that time?
Yeah?
Yeah. You have to go through a public hearing notice and make any amendments. Yeah, and then we would have to reconvene, I believe we'd have to reconvene a commission, would we not, or is it just a public hearing?
We keep the commission.
Okay.
The commission is a standing commission.
Standing commission.
Yeah.
So if the law changes, it can be changed.
But they would have to, they would have to propose, they'd have to take it up, propose it, have a public hearing and go through. It's just, I just feel that the law is already pretty clear, so, just my opinion.
And...
Please, I'm thinking too that we hired Antonio to do this, and if this is what he comes up with, I guess that's, well, I think we should vote it, because if we didn't think that his advice was any good, why do we hire him to start with? Another one of those studies.
You swayed me. You swayed me, Walt.
All right, any other discussion?
Mayor, I just...
Yes, please.
Excuse me, I just want to make the comment that neither option is wrong. It's, and clearly the council's concerned that we would be perhaps unduly restricting ourselves by leaving the language as originally was proposed and adopted back in January, with the exception of that change, and either one is fine, you can do either one. In fact, there'd probably be less likelihood that you'd have to make any amendments to the comp plan if you struck all the language as was proposed in option one. Again, the county is allowed to make comments, other adjacent jurisdictions are allowed to make comments, the county did make comments, and we took public comments, and then the planning commission recommended the document that you had before you. You have the final say. You made three amendments, and those are all fine, but for the fact that there's an inconsistency by only deleting that second paragraph. So the question is, is just whichever one is easier, is the council more comfortable with? Nonetheless, we have to follow whatever process exists in state statute at the time that we would be moving forward with any annexation. So either option is fine, and there's nothing wrong with that, it's just what approach you want to take going forward. I think the planning consultant is recommending, as a zoning purist, is that we be very transparent about the process and the issues that the city council would consider, so that future developers or future property owners are going to understand what the city's position is and what are the general steps that you need to go through to make a future annexation happen, so.
Great. All right, any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second on the floor to rescind the Second Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, essentially bringing us to option two as outlined in our packet. Any discussion, any additional discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
No.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, four, one. So now, do we want to make that change of removing the word "close," or are we fine with it as written? Chair would entertain a motion either way, I don't care.
I suppose we need a motion for discussion, so...
Please.
I move to remove "close" for the sake of discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to remove the word "close" in, on page 38 of the Comprehensive Plan. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I guess as I'm reading this, to interpret the word "close," that's up to interpretation.
Right.
So if "close" means that we contact the county board, or somebody, or a land commissioner, whomever, that is, you know, "close" is up to interpretation. So I guess my next question would be, would we need to, I suppose to make this change, we could do this now, we wouldn't need to reconvene the planning commission to omit one word, but, I mean, again, "close" is up to interpretation. So what is "close"?
Different view than somebody else.
Right. So I don't know if we need to, if we need to strike it, or where we're at.
Any other discussion?
What, does anyone know exactly, I haven't looked up the statute, does anyone know exactly what the statute requires for coordination? Is it coordination with the underlying county? Is coordination the word used? So I agree, well, I guess I haven't really agreed with anyone out here, but I very much support layperson terms in these sorts of documents, because people hear that this property's getting annexed, maybe it's their property, and they don't know what to do, and then they call lawyers. And then they have to pay lawyers to explain something that if we just put it in the plan, I'm just very pro-information, that I think that accomplishes that. But I also share this concern of close coordination with Kooch County. What does that mean? Does that mean oversight? Because when I hear "close coordination," I think, are they going to be overseeing what we're doing, which is obviously not anyone's intent here. So how do we fix that word? And I should have looked up the statute, I guess beforehand, because I'd be interested to know if coordination is the word that's used. But regardless, I would be more comfortable if we remove "close" and just have coordination with Koochichin County, just because the gut reaction I get, which is what all the citizens of International Falls would get, is they'd hear that word and just have a bad taste in their mouth, and I don't want that to happen. So I would be comfortable with "close," but I would also be interested to know, and I can look it up myself, if it says "coordination" within the statute of required annexation steps.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, well, we have a motion on the floor to remove the word "close" on page 38 of the Comprehensive Plan in paragraph two, number two. Chair would entertain, or Chair would call the question at this time.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. All right, we're now on the consent agenda. We have three items on our consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve the election judges for the March 3rd, 2020 Presidential Prime The first is to approve the election judges for the March 3rd, 2020 presidential primary election, August 11th, 2020 primary election, and the November 3rd, 2020 general election. We have the approval of purchases of Knox boxes by the fire department, and to approve necessary expenses for Jason Choblam, the working foreman, to attend the Minnesota Department of Transportation's fundamentals on construction inspection training on March 18th, 2020 in Wilmer, Minnesota. Just as a reminder, there is no discussion on the consent agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a, a motion by Counselor Deitch. Second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five, zero. Next, we get to a request for a letter of support for the Voyagers National Park application for the dark sky designation. Chair would entertain a motion to have the city write a letter of support for Voyagers National Park's application. We have a motion by Counselor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion?
I think this is great.
Me too. In, in, in some of the conversations that I've had, and I'm, I'm getting better at names, but I'm still horrible with names. Doug Franchio came and spoke with me with one of the representatives from the Voyagers National Park Association, and we had a conversation about the dark sky and everything that's, that they're trying to get approved out of the, the national park, and one of the things that we really discussed is what that designation of dark, of a dark sky does for International Falls, for the area, and what it does is brings tourists. It's just another, another nameplate that they can put on Voyagers National Park, which brings in a different group of people. We're bringing in birders, we're bringing in people that want to utilize the lake for canoeing, utilize the campsites, so it's just another way to try to draw people to the area, and in the future, one of the things that they'd be looking at doing is maybe bringing in a festival that could be in, in International Falls city limits, and be able to bring people to and from the parks to basically help some of our tourism in our area with moving forward. So I think this is just one step in trying to build that relationship with Voyagers National Park, and I'm very happy that we're able to do this this evening. Any other discussion on, on the letter of support? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five, zero. Next, we have adopt the resolution approving the application for an exempt permit for the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association, Trails End Chapter to conduct a raffle for the drowning to be held on April 3rd, 2020 at Bacchus Community Building. Chair would entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus, and we have immediate second by Counselor Deitch.
All right.
Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five, zero. Next, we have a resolution approving a tax, I'm sorry, exempt permit for Voyager's Ducks Unlimited to conduct a raffle with the drowning to be held on March 20th, 2020 at American and International Falls. Chair would entertain a motion on that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries five, zero. Next, we have the Charter, Charter Commission has requested the city council to identify specific items of concern. We had discussed this at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week. We went through, everyone had had a copy of the Charter. The administrator and I went, I don't know, we must have spent five hours at it, hey?
Hey.
It was, hey, I'm like just south of the border. So, we went through, and these are the items that we identified that were of concern. If there's anything that needs to be added, the one thing that I would, I would suggest is, because this is a two-page document, and there's a lot of, lot of changes that just need to be taken a look at, I would suggest, given how in-depth this is, to give an area of, of focus for them, because they may go through this a couple of times in the next year or so, or a couple of years, but if we can give an area of focus of something that we want them to look at in, in a little bit earlier than later, that would be my suggestion.
Please. Mr. Mayor, I, going through, I, I took an opportunity to go through, I guess, and I see here in the report that you have Section Eight outlined, talking about gender neutral, i.e. he, she, or they.
Yep.
I actually found that that, that particular issue starts in Section Seven and runs all the way through Section 47, I believe, was the last one that I found with his or he.
Yep.
And quite interesting, some of these were updated as recently as 2006, and for, some places say him slash her, other places just say him, he, his, himself. I didn't, I stopped counting, but I found over 50 his or he or himself in there, so I just feel that, even though, if you look on the very last page of the Charter Commission, Section 141 has word construction that says whenever used in this charter, the singular shall include the plural, and the plural, the singular unless the context otherwise requires, and the masculine shall include the feminine, and the feminine, the masculine, that's a copula.
Yeah.
So it needs, in my opinion, that needs to change.
And that's, that's one of the things that we both identified as well. So, just, just having like a frank conversation, my, my concerns immediately are, and the ones that I, I highlighted to think about an area of focus would be, under the powers and duties of the city council, Section 74, consider language to change or delete the requirement to have a referendum approved by the electors of the city to authorize the issuance of bonds by the city council. Right now, we are essentially debt-free. The only monies that we have ever expended are through a bond, which have went to the, to the voters. I understand the reasoning for that, we are in good financial shape as a city because of that. However, there are small loans that we can get that is basically like a, like a grant, because it's such low-interest loans, but we're not able to do that without going to voter approval. So, specifically as outlined by one of our department heads, Rural Water gives very good loans that we can get through them to update our, our infrastructure, but we're not able to do that because we can't, we can't borrow money. We went through a huge fiasco a couple of years ago over radios, because we had to figure out how to, how to be able to lease our radios, so that we're not buying our radios, because if we buy, buy a radio, you know, there's, there's just, there, there are advantages and disadvantages, and I think that it makes sense for the Charter Commission to be able to take a look at whether the city council should be able to bond four monies with the city. The other, the next one that I, I looked at is under Section Seven, the police department. I think that we need to review whether we have a police civil service commission, and the reason, the reason for that is, when this was written, we had a city clerk. A city clerk was an elected position, and they were basically doing the administrative duties of the city. Because of that, they wanted to have a fair process for the police to be hired, fired, and, hired, fired, and, I can't think of the word, disciplined. So we had three members of our community which were put on a police civil service commission, and they would hear, hear the information back and forth, and make a recommendation of what we do with our police department, our, our, our police. The reality is, is it's 2020, we have a city administrator, the city administrator oversees a police chief, the police chief should have the ability to discipline his own staff, and if there's an issue with that, it would go to the city administrator. It is kind of an archaic system. Most cities have gotten dis, or abolished their police civil services, so that's a piece that I would like to have them take a look at. In the event that they do choose that we do not need to have a police civil service, the, the way that we would abolish the civil service, if it's their recommendation, is a five, zero vote of the city council to abolish that commission. This isn't about trying to give the city council more power, or give the city administrator more power. We have had citizens that have served on this board, and because of the nature of dealing with HR issues, it has caused members of our community that are serving the community some financial losses in their business, because they've had to make decisions on this board that have caused people not to go to their business. It, it's, it's an archaic system, to say the least. Next, under Section, Section Eight, the fire department. I think we need to revise that to have the same understanding of wording as the police department. They are right next to each other in the Charter, and their wording of how the departments are organized are completely different, and not fluid. If you actually read the, the words, the fire chief's actual title is fire chief supervised by the city administrator is the fire chief's actual title. So, if you ever want to call fire chief supervised by the city administrator, minosa, please do. Next is the fire civil service commission, same concept as the police civil service commission. The only difference is if the, if the Charter Commission deems that we don't keep a fire civil service commission, the way you abolish that, it has to go to the voters, it would be on, on the November election, so it would be on the ballot as a question to the citizens of International Falls if we wanted to abolish the fire civil service. Next is, is the city engineer, Chapter 11, the city engineer and public works department. That entire section is not how we operate our business. We do not have a city engineer, and the city engineer does not oversee our public works department. In fact, our public works department works with a city engineer to do the work, so that also, I think, needs to be revised relatively quickly, especially as we're updating what, what we're doing in the public works department. And finally, the last one that I think should be a, a area of focus would be the Board of Health, and this has been on radar since I first got on the city council there, we discussed it when I was on the city council there, and now we're talking about it again as mayor. The, the issue with the Board of Health is, we don't have anybody in that role. Even if we have somebody in that role, it's very, very difficult to get someone in that role, because we have to pay them to be our health, our health officer. If we have a health officer and we're paying them, we can't pay them enough to cover their health, or their insurance to do the job. So, we either have to come up with a lot more money for a job that we're very, very seldom using, or we have to cut it out, as we do have, we are still in Cooching County, we can still use the Cooching County Health, so that's another area that I think we need to take a look at. I know I talked a long time, but this was, as I said, Ken and I went through this pretty much all day last week, so those were the areas that I think we should go for a focus. I would also open the door to anybody on this council that wants to have anything that you specifically like to look at, but I would make the recommendation, as, as does the city administrator, to give the complete list of concerns with the Home Rule Charter, but add the areas of focus for them to take a look at.
Mr. Mayor...
Please.
Can I add one thing on Section 52?
Yes.
One, there was a sentence in there that was particularly interesting to me, and it's the, it's the final sentence, and you did note that you wanted to look at it, and as it pertains to Section 74, but one thing of interest, in talking about bonding, it says, provided however that the amount of certificates so issued shall not exceed at any one time 1% of the total value of taxable property of such city, according to the last preceding assessment for purposes of taxation. And that's particularly important when we're talking about permanent improvement, which is basically any of the street water sewer updates that we're looking to potentially bond for. So just to put it in perspective, if we were going to bond $5 million, the taxable value of the city would have to be $500 million. So you're talking half a billion dollars to get five million bucks. So it's just, it's an interesting thought when you figure that one, it can only be 1% of the taxable value as last assessed of the city, so that's a, I, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying that that might be a provision we'd want to look at sooner rather than later.
Okay.
If we're going to bond to do, against the sales tax, that's something we're certainly going to want to look at, because that's a lot of money, when you think about it, and looking at some of the tax cases that the county has lost in the last, just in the last year, the taxable value of a very large business on the west end of town, and a very large employer on the north end of town have gone down substantially, which would lead one to believe that the taxable value of the city will follow suit.
So, at this, any other discussion? So at this time, I, I would add Counselor Kraus's concerns of Section 52 to the ones that I have, and so I would entertain, entertain any motion that you guys bring forward. However, Section 52, 74, 103, 104, 105, 115, and 118 through 123 would be the areas of focus I would like them to look at, but I do think it makes sense for all of the, the issues that have been addressed to be looked at. So I would entertain any motion at this time.
I move that we go with your list?
Okay.
Is that appropriate motion?
Yep, that, that's appropriate.
Oh, adding that, the piece of the 1% to look at?
Yep, I, I have that on there.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure that that's of particular...
So let me make sure that we have the correct motion. The motion is to make a recommendation to the Charter Commission, the changes outlined on, outlined on our, our document here, with an area of focus of Section 52, 74, 103, 104, 105, 115, and 118 through 123. Is that your motion?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion? Additional discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes, motion carries five, zero. Next, we go to the Committee of the Whole recommendations. First would be a resolution to appoint Ted Brokaw to the position of Public Works Director. First would be a resolution to appoint Ted Brokaw to the position of public works director effective February 19th, 2020.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion? Ted, why don't you come on up?
He thought he was going to get out of it.
Mayor, while he's doing that, then the, the action would be to adopt the resolution that was drafted that would appoint Ted to the position of public works director with the findings in there.
So what, what are we going to do now? What's, what's the plan?
Lots of things. We have lots of work to do.
Can you just give us a quick update on what we're looking at doing this summer?
Well, right now, we're waiting to hear back on 60% design for the 85 blocks that we laid out in the CIP. We should be very close to our CIPP lining project, which will help with our I and I. I'm waiting any day to hear back from Indot what their engineer's estimate is on Highway Working on the steam to hot water conversion at the library. Been going through, going through some papers at the street garage. Just a few. It's going to be a busy, busy summer. We got the ground storage tank, we got some work to do. I'm actually looking into seeing if we can flip flop and do tank one rather than tank two in 2021. It all depends on where the prices come in, on how much we can do. I'm, I'm hoping we can tell you we can do 90 blocks, rather than 80. Our, our goal was 85, but it all depends on where all the prices come in.
All right. Well, I'm, I'm very excited. I, I think we do have a lot of stuff this summer, and I think that you have definitely through my time in public works, been very impressive with how you've laid out plans for five years, 10 years, and then what we've been able to do with the CIP Highway 53 project. I'm, I'm very excited to see where we move from here. So we have a motion and second to appoint Ted Brokaw to the public works director. He really wants to be called the director of public works.
Can we add under, under the city administrator to that?
So we have a motion and second on the floor. Chair would entertain, or chair would call the question at this time.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Ted.
Thank you. And by the way, when that title was created, it did start out as director of public works.
All right. Next is to schedule a closed session for the city council to conduct a performance review of our city administrator. HR chair.
I just need a date that works for everybody, and we need to be able to provide, how much notice, Ken?
72 hours minimum.
Okay. Well, this week is kind of out for me anyway, but when's our next city council meeting? March 2nd? Would you guys like to get it done before that time, after that time? How busy are you?
I, I would be available to do it before the city council meeting, if, because.
I would also.
We can make that work, I mean.
Okay.
What days work best? Wednesdays do not work.
I was literally thinking before the city council meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
On Monday the 2nd?
Yeah.
Okay, what time?
4:30.
4:30 should be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be good.
All right. Second to work for you, Ken?
I think I can make that work an hour before the meeting, yes.
Okay, great. Next, we have just some council information on the transportation alternatives program grant. Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought I would provide a, as you can see, I got an email on the 13th of February that outlined our scoring for the application that we had submitted for federal transportation alternatives funding. And actually, those funds wouldn't be available till fiscal year '24, but they're taking applications now. We proposed on doing some sidewalk work from Highway 53 on the south side of 11th Street all the way to 8th Avenue, and then also doing a bituminous trail where it's proposed to end as part of the Highway 53 project at 7th Street. It would extend along 7th Street to 2nd Avenue and then head north as close as we could get to the border crossing, and that's what we had proposed. Our total cost were about $280,000. Actually, I distributed a map to you earlier, and our, our total costs were $280,563. About $50,000 of that was a city cost, the rest was part of the application for federal funding. And you can see how they scored our application. We did not get selected for funding. They did select three projects, and all three projects were cut in half from $600,000 down to $300,000. And they chose to fund a, the Kichigami State Trail, that was an application by the Minnesota DNR. They funded a, the Oberstar State Trail in Pine County, and that, that project was reduced from $600,000 down to $300,000. And then the Cloquet Multi-Use Trail, I think was the other one, actually, and that one was also reduced and cut in half. So the funding for our region is $900,000, and there was nearly $4.5 million in requests. So I have not spoke with the person that was staffing the review committee to find out specifically how ours might have been better to score higher, but I just wanted to make the council known that we did not get funded for that project. And we're still hoping to do the work as part of the road improvements that are scheduled in 2022 on those two, on that street and that avenue.
One of the things that I've, I've had a lot of conversations with other, other organizations, and specifically Department of Health, grants come up all the time. And if we already have a, a, a grant application ready and we just have to modify it, I mean, we've done all the legwork now, so if we have any of these projects that come up through, you know, Blue City Project or something else, I mean, as soon as we find out about some of those, now we have all the work already done, we can just pull it off. So I, I don't look at this as a failure in any capacity, it's just a, an opportunity for us to, to seek out another grant and another opportunity. So I, I appreciate your hard work on this. I know the last two days, there was a lot of struggle to try to get this done and in, so I appreciate that. Any other business to come before the council at this time?
Say, Mayor?
Yes.
I did receive some information just before the meeting, and I had passed out a sheet that we had received regarding a proposal to the mayor in the city of International Falls to, we have an opportunity to hear, we'll really have a sit-down style interaction and information discussion with the radio, and I don't know, do you want to talk about that? Can you do that?
Aye. I was asked to present to the city council the idea of having a once-a-month television style, sit-down informational, YouTube, KCTV, I believe, signed the agreement today with us, so it could also go on Channel 7 if they chose to do it. It's more along the lines of having the idea to give the city citizens more information about what goes on here, the topics that are brought up at the two city council meetings per month, any committee of the whole meeting, any, anything the city council would like the people of International Falls to be more informed on, especially now in the next two years with the Highway 53 project, any bad rumors of what might be coming, what isn't coming, just to let the people know what's going on. We've started this new media outpour through the community. Again, to my knowledge, the agreement between us and KCTV was signed today. They will be broadcasting our information as well as sporting events from us through them onto Midco. The city would have the same opportunity.
Okay.
Plus YouTube. I mean, it's multifaceted. Plus, we would take any of the audio excerpts and use them on the morning show anytime we saw fit.
I, I would definitely be interested in that. I, I guess I have a whole bunch of questions on, on the KCTV and how that works with city funding, nonprofit, now working with a for-profit.
We, we check the legalities of it, or I should say, Bacchus checked in on the legalities. When we do advertising, as long as we're not advertising liquor, which we can't do anyway in high school sporting events.
Right.
And we don't name prices, pricing, or advertise a bar, we're in no violation.
Okay.
And when we do the television aspects of our ads, if you've watched any of our sporting events, on the ads, there's no pricing, there's no liquor stores, there's no, we're already following that guideline.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I'm more than interested in getting more information out, and I, I think I've made that as abundantly clear as I possibly can, that, you know, I want people to understand what we're doing in our community, and I'm, I'm all for it, as long as there's no legal issues or anything like that, but I can't foresee that, so.
The only, the legal issues may be through KCTV, but there would be none for us.
Right.
I mean, it would still go on YourLiveEvent.com and YouTube and Facebook. Whether or not KCTV wants to patch that through to Channel 7 is, is their call. They're already going to do the sporting events.
Is KCTV our television station? It's a municipal peg channel, correct?
It's a public educational channel, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm, I guess I'm just kind of confused on what's happened with KCTV in the last year. You know, it was a city peg channel, now it's been handed off to Bacchus, and now they're going into business with other, I just, I just don't understand the legality of what.
Something to understand about KCTV, we are in no way using any of their product.
Correct.
They are simply patching our broadcast of sporting events through them. They receive nothing from us, we receive nothing from them.
Understandable. I, I just, it's that model, I don't understand that, and it's not a big deal. Figure it out someday.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have one question, and I'm just wondering, you, you talked a little bit about liquor. Is tobacco handled the same way as liquor?
We, we don't, we never advertise tobacco.
Okay. Is there any law limiting or prohibiting you from doing that?
I am sure the same rules and regulations of tobacco that the FCC has. We, we never have done any tobacco advertising.
Okay.
And probably wouldn't, even if we could, so.
This isn't anything we would need to have a motion for, though, correct?
Well, Mayor, I, I think maybe you just, you know, just based on your questions about KCTV and how the old interaction would work, even I, I think, as you pointed out, I think we're all very supportive of a very transparent local government in trying to get information out to as many people as we can, as fast as we can, and accurately.
Right.
Maybe it would just warrant referring it to the committee of the whole, and in the meantime, we can maybe have a conversation with the officials at Bacchus as well as KCTV and answer some of those detailed questions you raised, and just discuss it at the next committee of the whole, and, and if we want to move forward, I, I don't know if there'd be any kind of a, it talks about a mutual agreement here, is that just kind of an informal agreement, or would you have some kind of a?
It would be entirely up to whomever, whether it be a council, or whether it be a designate from you, or whether you yourself, whoever wanted to do that particular show, we just do it. It's, it's going to be just a kind of a sit-down informal recording, hopefully something that might take an hour, hour and a half, because we get multi ideas and, and topics, and then we just edit it into segments.
Great. No, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of the idea. Like I said, I, I think that's great, so. Well, I think that's a wonderful idea from the city administrator to have that discussion at the committee of the whole meeting, and we'll follow up with you. Thank you so much. Anything else to come before the council? In your packets, you received information from the police, fire, rescue EMS, their monthly reports. Do we have any reports from the city administrator?
Well, Mayor, I would just point out that there is a special primary election that's coming up in the city of International Falls on Tuesday, March 3rd, and those hours are from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and we'll be including some information in the water billing that goes out this month, so that people can, as a reminder that that election's going on, I would point out that we've been advised that for this election, people need to disclose what party ballot they want to vote on, and that information would be made known to the election judges, and some people have voiced some opposition to that, and, and I know that in the league of Minnesota city circles, as well as other cities, for people in your position as elected officials on a nonpartisan basis, it's a lot of elected council members, as well as people in my position, we have to serve the city council on a nonpartisan basis too. You know, do we want to show up at the ballot place and say, yeah, I want a grassroots marijuana party ballot, or do I want a DFL ballot? And, and they don't want to disclose that because it becomes public and, and it really compromises your nonpartisan status. So I just want to make that clear to the council, as well as any of the public, so that they're advised of that in advance. And so I'm just reminding people that that primary ballot will be on, on March 3rd. We do have election judge training for all the people that you appointed, that started today, tomorrow, and Thursday, so that'll be moving forward. And then just for an informational notice, as an outcome of the last housing collaborative meeting, there was some discussion and representatives from the St. Louis County Habitat for Humanity Agency, and so there's a group that is exploring the feasibility of perhaps creating a Habitat for Humanity agency or group here for Koochin County. So there's a meeting on Thursday to have the first exploration of the feasibility of doing that. So there are some cities that have been very active with Habitat for Humanity. I think the one example that was raised was the city of Hibbing, and the gentleman mentioned that the busiest developer in the city of Hibbing is Habitat for Humanity, they've done as many as 30 homes down there. I don't know what time span that was over, but, so they've been very active. And so we'll be exploring that, and if there's anything that the council needs to know, I'll try and keep you advised as we move forward.
Great, thank you. City attorney?
Mayor and council, extremely busy day-to-day in district court, actually prosecuted 37 different cases on behalf of the city criminal cases, which is, I think, easily the most I've ever had in one day in the 10 years I've been in this position. So police department's keeping us busy. Also, we've totally resolved and settled the case with ICO, so that's all done, so we don't have any pending blight court cases any longer. We may have some coming up that we're going to want to, you know, take those next steps coming up, where there've been letters and things that haven't been complied with, but all of the ones that the council's taken action on are over at this point in time. That's all I have.
Thank you. I got a, I got a question with the 37 cases that you have. Is it common for a city our size to have the city attorney to represent us in court, or is it just as common having a county, a county attorney do it on the behalf of the city?
Oh, I think that cities our size, I don't know of any that don't have a city attorney. It's, some cities have two separate contracts, they do one for criminal cases.
Okay.
And one for civil cases. I think that's the way it is in Grand Rapids, I think they actually have two different attorneys. have two different attorneys, one that does the civil side and one does the criminal side. And I would say here locally, I haven't checked closely, but I would guess that probably three-fourths of my time is spent on criminal cases rather than civil cases.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious. I just know that we're a small community, and it seems like there's so much more going on in the city than there is in the county, and, you know, I just...
Well, and the breakdown, in case you don't know, with regard to cases that the county attorney handles and the cases that I handle, the county attorney, even for crimes that occur in the city, if they are gross misdemeanors or felonies, the county attorney handles.
Okay.
What I handle are misdemeanors and ordinance violations. The only area where I handle the more serious charges, felonies and gross misdemeanors, is in the DWI area, because then I handle all DWI cases that occur in the city. So that's the breakdown between us. And County Attorney's Office has more cases and more complicated cases than I would have. For instance, the drug busts and things that we hear about, I'm not involved in those at all. It's all done by the county attorney.
Well, thank you. That, that makes my mind right on what, what's happening, I guess. I, and I've sat in on court and just watched it one day with you, so that was great. No, thank you. I appreciate that. Any department heads have anything to bring forward? All right. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. I'll tell you what, we're doing a lot of stuff in, in committees. We had a good discussion today at, at Land Use and Legislation. We've been having some really good stuff. Our Committee of the Whole meetings, as you can see with what we had from our last agenda and, and meetings, we have a lot of stuff we're working on, and we're legitimately working through it. So I'm very happy with the council, the department heads that have been able to offer us information so we can make some good decisions moving forward. Last month, we did make two final decisions. Neither of them had to come to council because we are not making any recommendations for change. One of them is the deer hunting in city limits. It did come out of Land Use and Legislation that we are not going to allow deer hunting in the city. We're not doing anything with that. And there were multiple reasons for that, one being the comprehensive plan that had been adopted and went through the process, and the community as a general rule did not want to see that happen. Secondly, we have such limited area in the city limits that you would be able to do it, and it's all private property. And if the property owners didn't want someone to hunt on that, it's just, it's not feasible, and it's not something that we're going to pursue moving forward. And the second one was the Residential Commercial Blight Ad-Hoc Committee. There was conversation about making them an official Committee of the City and to report to the Committee of the Whole. And at this time, we're going to leave the Commercial Residential Ad-Hoc Blight Committee as it is, and working with our two city counselors and our staff. So those are the two things that came up. We are currently working on some other changes in the community. One is ATVs and ATVs, snowmobiles, and golf carts being able to be used in the city. It's a conversation that we started today. We're also looking at the bag policy. We're looking at updating our, some of our policies for computer use, social media computer use. And we just have a lot of stuff that we're, we're walking through and trying to finalize. So I do appreciate every member of the City Council and our staff that's been working through these. So that's all I have. Anybody else have anything? All right. Anybody from the audience have anything to bring forward? Hearing none. We have correspondence from LGA. We got increased 4,950 from the Department of Revenue. We ended up receiving the Library Board of Trustees Agenda Minutes. Our next City Council meeting is March 2nd, 2020, and we do have an HR meeting at 4:30 before that. So we are adjourned.